Good evening and welcome to the March 18th, 2024, meeting of the Richmond Common Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a prayer by Counselor Parker.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for our many blessings. Please watch over our citizens and all those who protect us. Be with this council tonight and guide us in our decisions so that they are correct and of the benefit to our city. Help us, Lord, to be worthy of your blessings. Blessed citizens of Selma and Winchester, help them to heal and rebuild. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. You've received minutes from our March 4th meeting. Any corrections or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our March 4th minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions or memorials or complaints tonight, so we'll go straight to the mayor for his communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. Turn your attention to the monitors up here. The Winchester tornado response on Thursday night, Richmond Fire Department and Police Department both responded and helped with traffic and transporting the injured. And with a drone survey I'll cover in a second, the RFD EMS transported eight patients, five to Muncie, two to Portland, and one to Reed. And their destination was based upon their type of service they needed. So that was on Thursday night. And on Friday, our Police Department went back and helped with traffic. And then on Friday, Richmond Fire Department drone was asked to survey the east side of 27, while the Department Homeland Security surveyed the west side using the same similar drones. So they took, I believe, 3,600 pictures. We now have a slideshow, so we can share it with everybody, law enforcement, up there, officials up there, insurance, everybody. There's an update on the website of how many houses were damaged. We did get a thank you message from Mayor Bob McCoy. It's very short, Winchester Mayor Bob McCoy. He wanted you to know, just short and sweet, thank you for your assistance. Pretty much sums it up. On the Now Entering the Ball State PBS documentary, here's the website if you want to be a storyteller. We had a public meeting last week to start interviewing storytellers. And we've discovered that with the spring break next week, we don't have a lot of storytellers. And then we got the eclipse coming, so they're going to do the actual production day, April the 12th and 13th was the date they landed on. So there's time to get more storytellers in here. So if you want more information about that, see me or check out the website for the Now Entering program. And all, oh, the eclipse website, richmansolareclipse.com. The all department heads of police and fire, we've created a logistics manual for internal purposes only. But there's stuff on the website if you want information about the eclipse. I think everybody's heard enough about it. We're ready for it to happen, aren't we? I won't go through that much more. The presentation on the unsheltered homeless will come up in a minute under the police chief. They still need volunteers for the Easter egg hunt, eclipse volunteers, and park cleanup and invasive removal. So that's all I have.
Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, we'll move on. You received minutes from the February 22nd and 29th meetings of the Board of Works. Questions or concerns about that? We'll move on to the department presentation tonight. Chief Kyle Weatherly is going to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
House members. So I can't say enough about the group of people that have come together to really tackle the homeless or unsheltered encampments that we've had in the area. It's been a citywide effort. We've had volunteers from not just the Police Department, the Fire Department, Street Department, Parks Department, sanitation. Everybody has come together and done an excellent job of not just cleaning up the area, but actually the unsheltered, giving them the resources they need to actually get housing. So what we're going to do is give just a little bit of a presentation of some of the efforts that have been put in and some of the resources. We've got a couple gentlemen here that we want to recognize for their efforts as well. We'll let Detective Tudor and Lieutenant Black do that presentation. So I do want to take just a second. For decades, the Richmond Police Department has had what we call a dedicated traffic division. So we have taken a little bit of a change from that direction. So what we want to do is we have envisioned a new direction for that division. And it's called PACT. It's policing and community together. And there are going to be some changes as far as targeted enforcement for, we'll use the example of a request made in front of our local schools. And we will take a dedicated traffic officer and put on that spot to really work on the complaints from the from the community. We have Detective Julia Ridgeway, who is a traffic reconstructionist. She will also be working not just criminal investigations into the traffic division, but she will also work as a traffic enforcement officer. So she'll have a couple dual roles. Detective Pat Tudor is our, he's our community guy. He has taken this on. And so to speak, he has grabbed the bull by the horns. He has done an excellent job. Mike Black is the lieutenant over the division. He's overseeing all aspects of it. And nothing is done without the administrative assistant, Levon Jewitt. I can't say enough about her as well. So at this time, if I could, have Lieutenant Black, Detective Tudor. Turn it over to these guys.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us tonight. As Chief Weatherly explained, our division has been redefined in the last couple of weeks. We are now called the PACT Division, which is police and communities together. A lot of our responsibilities and roles have changed from the past. So I took over this division January 2nd. Taking over this division, this division has always been like a traffic enforcement crash reconstruction. With this, with this new division, we're actually going to focus a lot of our efforts less on those traffic crashes on a daily basis. As he indicated, Detective Ridgeway, she's still going to be our traffic fatal reconstructionist. That's kind of where my background comes from. So we'll still be doing that type of role. Other roles, like Chief Weatherly explained, is targeting those enforcement areas, those high profile areas that we get complaints on. Detective Ridgeway will also, she will also be a part of that. And then brought in a new officer, Officer Hobbs, who'll be starting with us in a couple weeks. We're really excited to redefine this new, this new division. At the beginning of the year, I was tasked with this project by our administration and efforts also from the citizens' calls for action. So I think Mayor Oler contacted the administration, which ultimately, community engagement, we received the complaints. Some of these complaints that were received that we started focusing on, one was the homeless camps, unsheltered camps in the area of South 37th and Bachmire. Another one was the Gemola Park, just north of the property. One was behind TSC and then the Cardinal Greenway. We received a lot of complaints for the Cardinal Greenway. So this was a difficult mission. I attacked this in three different phases. The first phase was just to investigate some of the complaints. We went down to the Gateway Plaza and talked to a lot of the business owners. We discussed some of their concerns, some of their problems. Some of those concerns and problems might just have been as simple as shoplifting in their businesses. Others were littering, you know. Some was actually behind the stores, urination, odors of urination. Paraphernalia was a complaint that they were finding in their bathrooms. Open fires. Some of the business owners' residents in the area were concerned about the structures also maybe catching fire, loud noises. And then we were compromised a lot with overdoses in some of these areas and trying to administer medical tension back in those hard, hard areas to get to. So those are just a few of those complaints that we received. That's phase one. Phase two, Detective Ridgeway and I and Detective Tudor came on board a few weeks later. We started identifying some of those, those camps in the Cardinal Greenway, South 37th Street, Gemola Park, and determined their locations and occupants. Most of those camps were vacant. A few occupants in general areas. And Detective Tudor will get into some of those areas. So that's the second phase. We marked some of those, those camps during that phase and took photographs so we could come back to those areas. And then the third phase, I'll be honest with you, that's, that's the phase that, that I worried most about. The third phase was resources. I didn't have any resources at the time. So I think as we went along during the project, those resources started to identify themselves. And they identified themselves very well. I had lots of resources to come forward. So I do want to recognize before I give the mic up to Detective Tudor, some of those resources, some of those resources, those Bridges for Life over here. We got Tim Pearson and Jeff Holhouse. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your help. So I'm going to give the, I'm going to give it up to Detective Tudor. Well, I also appreciate the opportunity to be here and just speak to you directly about what we've kind of been doing in our community. I feel like the acknowledgement that we're given, Tim and Jeff is, if you only knew how much they've been doing in the last 60 days. I mean, I tell everybody, they're, they're really the heroes. You know, we come in after them. And just to kind of talk a little about, about what they've been doing in helping us in this project is, once we go out and we identify these areas, either through citizen complaints, and I guess as you can see some of the slideshows, it's going to kind of indicate some of the areas that we've been focused on working, you know, working on. I think one of the big areas that we wanted to concentrate on first was around the Cardinal Greenway area. Obviously, if you've been down that, you know, some of that area, you can easily see, especially this time of year, there's no foliage on the trees. So it really makes it really prevalent. It stands out. You know, obviously, citizens driving by and seeing that and wondering, you know, what is the city, you know, doing? So to backtrack a little bit, again, as Lieutenant Black said, one of the first thing we did was send in the resources to find out if these camps were vacant or if there were unsheltered people staying at the camps. Once we identified people staying at those camps, then we would bring in those resources that Lieutenant Black talked about. The first call typically was going to be to Bridges for Life, which again is Tim and Jeff, because they've got a great foundation and a connection with all the resources that we need. So we filtered a lot of those needs directly to them. If we did identify somebody, you know, at one of these camps, we at that point would determine what needs they need. If there were mental health issues, we would make that connection. If there were substance abuse issues, we would make that connection. You know, and I think that, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think that once we got them involved and they were able to start identifying and talking to some of the individuals and finding out their story and their history, some of it was is they just couldn't, they didn't have an ID. They didn't have a birth certificate. They didn't have a social, you know, social security card. Those are all things that you actually need to do vital things within the community. So one of the things that they were tasked with really, and they spearheaded and took the lead on, was getting those resources that they need. So again, it was getting them the ID, going to the BMV, filling an affidavit out, getting them their, you know, their proper paperwork that they might need to, you know, get shelter. You know, once we determined those resources and who needed what, then again, it was kind of setting a timeline on what the next phase of this looked like. You know, for us, we did not want to, and I can assure you, and you know, the citizens of Richmond, we didn't come in and displace anybody. Okay? I know there were, you know, probably some rumors of that. And I even heard them myself, social media. But we were in these encampments, a minimum of 30, if not 45 days, prior to us going in and cleaning anything out. So before we just, you know, moved anybody, we made sure that, more so, they made sure that those resources were in place. We also even had some encampments that we didn't have the resources for them immediately at that time. And we chose at that point to leave them there, continue to work with them until we could get those resources in place. So all of the cleanup that you see here is a combination of what I'd say is the gorge area out behind Walmart, South 37th, what we would describe as kind of behind TSC, which was, was the project that was set today. And I feel that all of the individuals that were at the encampments were given, you know, a reasonable notice of at least 30 to 45 days. If they didn't, you know, have the resources in place then, we're just continuing to work with them until we can get them moved out. I know that from a lot of members of the community, they felt that, that number behind TSC, there were some people, and of course, Tim could kind of share this, because he heard a conversation between some, some citizens at one point, oh, there's hundreds of people living back there. There's hundreds of people. That is not actually the case. What would be the most that you guys encountered back there at any point? Eight to nine? Fair to say? Okay, so between eight and nine people. Again, and that's, so when we had that number for the last 45 days, we've worked with those people up until the point of Thursday last week, there's nobody out there any longer. So all those people, we worked with to get them into some type of housing, albeit it may be temporary. And they've got some great projects that I'd love for them to be able to share at some point that we're trying to, you know, what long term is going to look like. But you can see, I mean, obviously, these encampments have been there for some time. You know, again, some of those responsibilities that we have as law enforcement is what Lieutenant Black talked about. It's the theft. It's some of the, you know, people, you know, again, we heard B-Dubs telling us that, you know, people would come in and just take the food off the, you know, to go or the, or, you know, off the shelf and walk out with it. So, you know, we, we wanted to remedy those issue as well. But down on the Cardinal Greenway Trail, we did actually have two people that were still actively living down there. And I'd love if you guys would just come up and kind of just briefly talk about what you did to help get those people. I know one of them, and there's actually a photo of him. It was the first very photo that we had. And we asked if we could share that photo. His name is Rod. It's kind of a strange story, but I showed up down there and I see this person that kind of, somebody I resembled from high school. It's about 30 years ago. And I said, Rod? And he goes, yeah. And I said, you recognize me? He said, no, actually, I don't. I gave him my name and we embraced him in a big old hug. He was actually the starting quarterback for Northeastern High School my freshman year. He was my neighbor. I'm like, man, what's going on? We caught up for about 30 minutes. I got his backstory of why he was there. He was actually gainfully employed. There were just some circumstances in his life at that time that led him to where he was at. So again, I said, let us get in, you know, contact with Tim and Jeff and get you the resources that you need to get you out of here. So just kind of, if you would step up and just talk a little bit about maybe the numbers and, you know, where you're seeing that and kind of, I guess, give some affirmation to what you've seen us collectively do.
And just announce your name as you speak, please.
We'll both say something to you real quickly and keep it brief, but thank you for letting us be here. But one of the things, Tim Pearson, by the way.
Thank you.
Just gave me those instructions. But one thing I will say is this, is that if you were to undertake, that you're going to take people who are living homeless outside and the undertaking to take them and tell them they can't live there anymore, there's really no path for that not to be up for some level of criticism, especially if there's a lack of understanding on why they're there and what their situation is. But, but we were honored to be part of this. And one thing we can tell you for sure is that the way this was handled, regardless of what a few social media nuggets of, you know, half truths that come out are, this was handled with such class and great, great compassion and respect, not just from these two gentlemen here, but everyone who participated. It was, it was really a very classy way to do it. So any negative things that have happened, they're, they're based in untruth. These people were given plenty of notice. Most of them we knew and had interacted with previously, but we did meet a few new faces in the process. But the amount of not only just time that they were given, but the compassion and the courtesy that was extended to them when we was down the gorge before Rod left out. And Jeff will kind of tell you what, sort of what we did with him and others. But it was, how many times do you want to walk through your site to make sure you got all your stuff? I mean, Pat was like, you want to go through one more time and make sure you got it? Today at TSC, there was not one personal item. I mean, that was, that is a large space with a lot of stuff. And we can tell you for sure, not one piece of personal item that, of anybody's, that they did not have ample opportunity. We had a trailer full of stuff, multiple times moving people out of there. Nothing was left behind. No one back there is upset about it. They were, they were really pleased with the way it was handled. And so were we.
And I have to say, a lot of it in Tim's bar.
It's your name.
I'm Jeff Holhouse. And so that's the level of commitment to helping.
Yeah. And even at one point, you know, one of the individuals that we were trying to help out, made an arrangement with him that he have everything out by a certain day. We showed up and he just hadn't had it out yet. And I think they took multiple truckloads, rented storage units, you know. So doing everything we can, obviously, to do this the right way. And at the end of the day, when I go home, I feel proud about what we've done, what the community's done, and what the, you know, my department has done. And that has a lot of value for me. So these guys, and I can't say enough, because they're, they're out there daily, weekends, all types of, you know, hours of the, you know, day working, you know, their tail off to get these people, you know, placed. There are some things that I think that we as a community would like to see us to be able to focus on long term. And they've got some ideas in mind. And we've kind of already laid the foundation for some of that. So I'll be excited in the near future to be able to say, hey, what, what did this look like, you know, the next phase of it? And what does it look like long term, including getting some of the unsheltered people, not only permanent housing, but getting them equipped and maybe getting them to a, a construction type apprentice program, working on some houses that they can live in, and then having our local companies hire these individuals through the apprenticeship. I mean, how awesome would that be long term?
Yep. Awesome.
Yeah. So it is, what we can do here is offer them some life skills.
Yep.
You know, and I, I like, and you'll, Jeff will remember when I said this, I, you know, we had a very, one of our first meetings, I'm like, you know, this is a lot to take on. And I said, but we're going to break the ice. We're going to jump in and we're going to make waves. But we've broken the ice and we've got something started. And again, I can't thank these two enough for joining with, you know, us to get this done because without them, it's just, it looks like a law enforcement only initiative, which sometimes can be the authority figures coming in. And again, they've been a great resource for us and for the city. So I applaud you guys. Yeah.
Well, I think we all would express our thanks for all this. It's wonderful.
Mr. President. If I could, I commend you for everything you've done so far. But, and I know this has been done over a period of months, right? Hasn't this? Do you have a sense, are they back? Are the camps back or?
The main objective of this program is to connect the individuals that were living homeless with housing permanently. Well, that's a tall order and it takes time. Thankfully, we're blessed that there's some voucher programs that are active right now. Centerstone has been very helpful. Renee there has, she's just a beautiful person and has helped in so many ways to connect the individuals as we identify them with vouchers. Now that takes some work. Last Friday, we were able to move Joey, who came from Ohio, and I'll make this quick, but it's a really poignant example. He came from Ohio and his life basically fell apart. Now, here's a guy, very capable, smart, wants to work, absolutely wants to work, but his IDs were stolen, all three. So he had no birth certificate, no social security card, and no ID. And you can't get a job. So we can say all day long, just go get a job. There's all kinds of work. But if you can't shower and you have no IDs, you can't get a job. And he wants to work. This guy's been in tears in the last four or five days, at least a half a dozen times around us, because he's like, I am definitely one of your success stories. No drug use, just his life fell apart. So we got him a birth certificate. That took a couple of weeks. Then to get a social security card, you need to literally go to a doctor who will vouch for you living in this area and that you're who you are. In addition to that, then you take that and go to the social security office and say, okay, I have a birth certificate and now I have this from a doctor and I can get a social security card, but I need to wait two weeks for that. Once you have those two pieces of information, you can go to the License Bureau. And they're very friendly. And I applaud every city official here. I mean that. We have a great group of city officials. They want to work with us. So we can go to the License Bureau and sign an affidavit that says, this is a client of ours and he lives at Bridges for Life, because he has no home. And that's perfectly legal for us to do. And with his social security card and his birth certificate, he now has an ID. With the ID, he can finally go and stay in a hotel for the length of time until his voucher comes, because we don't have any temporary housing in the city. We're working on that. We're going to get this done. So it's, it's a very bright future for him. He is so excited because he can shower. And that man was looking for a job today. So from homeless to actually a taxpayer, that's what we're all after, right? Let's get these people to where they have a life again. I told you I'd be brief. Probably wasn't.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just, I just can't thank you guys enough. Just from my own experience working with both of you, you guys have a heart of gold. And I just am so thankful from the bottom of my heart for everything you do for so many people. You are a prime example of, if we all had a heart like that, this city would be turned around quicker than anything. And I just can't thank you enough. And both of, and all the officers too. This, you know, this, I just can't, we, you know, the, so many times, you guys already know this, but the media really likes to hammer a lot of people negatively. And there is so much good to be celebrated with all of our officers. I, I'm just, I can't thank you guys enough for all that you do. So many things you guys do behind the scenes that nobody will never even know about because you're not bringing attention to yourself, but it's something that needs to be done. And that's, that's very commendable. And I thank you.
Any other questions for these guys?
Sure.
Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Worth every minute.
President, I want to thank you. And I do want to add one of the things, something I found out today. With Joey, he got to keep his dog and take his dog with him.
That's important. Okay, let's see. You don't have any, yes, we do have some miscellaneous business tonight. Beginning with the Emergency Communications Department, the 911 and our local agreement.
Well, crap. I mean, we have to follow that presentation. Now it's the Finance Committee. Finance Committee met, reviewed 001, 2024, and we recommend approval and move the ordinance number 001, 2024 to second reading and read by title only.
Second. That's motion.
We have a motion and a second to advance this to second reading.
Oh, boy.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is it an inter-local agreement?
No, not in.
Okay.
Inter-local.
So that's a motion to approve this. Thank you. And a second.
There you go.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want me to?
We, okay, yes, we also have the heat, Beat the Heat Local Agreement, which will be assigned to Finance for review and is an ordinance that goes behind it. And we'll just do the presentation on both of those concurrently right now.
Can we read both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Inter-local Agreement number two, Beat the Heat. And then the ordinance that goes with it is ordinance number 19 2024, An Appropriation Ordinance Authorizing the Submittal, Acceptance, and Appropriation of a Grant from Indiana University.
Good evening. I'm Alice Seidel. I'm a member of the Richmond Environmental Sustainability Commission and spoken to you a lot about the environment and sustainability issues. Tonight, we are here because we had a wonderful opportunity happen, and it was just, the timing was just a little wonky, which is why we're here to ask for approval. So two years ago, some of you will remember, some of you were on council, I'm sorry, it was three years ago in 2021, we were awarded the Beat the Heat Program Funds, which was We were one of two communities in Indiana awarded that money. It was from an IU and Okra collaboration. We have Garrett here from Okra, so if there are any Okra questions, he's available for you. Wonderful program. Lucy, it's a two-year grant program, so I said two, and then I held up three fingers. I promise it was a two-year grant program, not a three-year grant program. Our coordinator got a permanent job a little earlier than we had hoped, which was wonderful for her, but left us with some remaining funds to do a project. We had wanted to do an air conditioner distribution project, really focused on elderly populations who are the most vulnerable to extreme heat. Wonderful, kept moving along. And then Okra said, that's not quite what we can spend this remaining money on, that's just not where we are, but we really want to support this program. So in addition to that extra funding, which we have, we have put into works in another way, Okra came to us and said, we have $20,000 to help you implement that program, that air conditioner program, which is a wonderful gift. And Okra has been a great partner in this. But it does mean that we are kind of out of order. We didn't apply for this in the normal grant way that we would normally come to you, ask you for permission to apply. We didn't do that. It was kind of wrapped up in that, in that program. So we're coming to you to ask for us to basically apply, get, and implement all of this at one time, and I know that's a little wonky. The inter-local agreement is to ensure that you see that there's a relationship then between the city and the trustees office. So Susan Isaac will be the one that administers the program, and that allows for Richmond to not be benefiting any resident with, with that kind of public funding. So we'll be doing it through Susan. She's been involved in it. She does this all the time. As you all know, this is just kind of how she operates, and so that's why we partnered this program with her being able to distribute it. She already has people at her door every day and knows really who needs this and who it will benefit most. So I would love to take questions about this. The funds cannot be used in any other way. This is not a $20,000 gift that we're just suggesting goes to the air conditioning program. This is Okra saying, we will give you money for the air conditioning program, not, you can just use it to buy hats. You know, this is not, this is not used however we want to use it. So if there are any other questions though, or questions for Garrett or Thomas Hill, who has done an extremely good job at kind of getting all of these, all of these i's dotted and t's crossed, since this was a little wonky order, please let us know. We're happy to answer questions.
Any questions from council? I have one.
Yeah.
When I read the piece, the $20,000 will be for the purchase of the units, correct?
Purchase and installation.
And installation.
Yeah.
Am I to understand there's also a subsidy for power there as well?
Yeah, there's a $100 utility credit, because we, as we know, some people can turn on that air conditioner and then can't afford to actually use it or pay for it. So there's a $100 utility credit that goes along with it. We expect older populations to be very smart about when they're turning this on and when they're using it. And as you can see in our packet, you'll see like the criteria of how we're prioritizing people. And people over 65 with a disability are the first priority, and then it kind of goes down from there. So we all trust that Susan can help to make some really good decisions about that, too. Does that make sense? Does that, did that answer your question, Gary?
It did.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
And with that, it's assigned to Finance, so maybe we'll see you again.
That would be great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ordinances on first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 17 2024, 18 2024, 19 2024 by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read by title only, 17, 18, and 19 2024 ordinances. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Ordinance number 17 2024, An Appropriation Ordinance Authorizing the Submittal, Acceptance, and Appropriation of a Grant from the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. My name is Audrey Shaich, and I'm the grant administrator for the city. Ordinance 17 2024 is an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal, acceptance, and appropriation of a grant through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. The Richmond Fire Department is preparing to submit an application on March 20th, 2024 to SAMSA for up to $200,000 to fund the recruitment and training of EMS personnel on addressing substance use disorders and co-occurring mental health condition. This grant requires a 10% local match, which will be provided as cash from budgeted emergency medical services funding. I can ask any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions from council? Was Finance able to look at this tonight?
No.
Okay. We'll be assigning this to Finance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 18.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we assign this? This says the application is due March the 20th.
Whoa.
Yeah.
That is a deadline?
Yeah.
Of consequence?
Yes, that is the hard deadline.
Okay, what's council's pleasure?
Motion to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 17 2024 to second reading, read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 17 2024 to second reading, read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number 17 2024, An Appropriation Ordinance Authorizing the Submittal, Acceptance, and Appropriation of a Grant from the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
This ordinance is now on public hearing. All those wishing to speak for it, please come forward. All those wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward.
Lou Purgorsman.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Dustin Burkhardt.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
All are in favor. Ordinance number 18 2024, A General Ordinance Amending Chapter 154 of the United, United, I can't even say, Unified Development Ordinance.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Dustin Purvis, Planning Director. Ordinance 18 is a request to amend Article 5 of the city's Unified Development Ordinance, specifically as it relates to detached garages and carports on smaller residential lots. Planning staff has just kind of come to the belief over the past few months that the code as it's currently written really limits some property owners from being able to build any sort of functional detached garage on their lot at all. So we're just hoping to alleviate that with this text amendment. This evening, we're just requesting that it be referred to the Advisory Plan Commission for public hearing and discussion during their meeting next Wednesday, the 27th. But if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Any questions for Dustin? It's assigned to Plan Commission.
There you go.
Ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number 19 2024, An Appropriation Ordinance Authorizing the Submittal, Acceptance, and Appropriation of a Grant from the Indiana University.
And we have assigned that to Finance already, so we're all set.